Okay, it's Monday, February 6th. Want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting this evening and we'll call this meeting to order. Everyone will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Here.
Harley.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Thank you, and we do have a quorum. We knew that Don and Harley were going to be absent tonight. So, I would entertain a motion to approve today's agenda with one amendment. Agenda item number 15, we will need to remove that from the agenda and just move it to a future agenda.
Motion to approve agenda with amendment.
Second. We have a motion and a second to entertain this, to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried. Across the mayor's desk, I just have Levi Clegg is our videographer tonight, so thank you Levi. Does the council have anything they would like to share? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the update from the city administrator.
All right, a few different announcements on activities, programs going around the city. One thing that the library started up again here actually several months back, but Conversations Connect, which is an opportunity to get together on Thursdays at the library from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. and from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. And the goal is just provide the opportunity for English and Spanish speakers or learning that as a second language to get together and practice conversations, practice vocabulary. So that's at the library on Thursdays. So a pretty neat program they have going on there. Upcoming at the Teets Entrepreneurial Center out the Iowa Lakes Campus here in town on February 13th, there's going to be a business startup panel discussion. Includes a few different local resources and experts, including the city and the chamber who are both here tonight, obviously, but just for persons that are interested in potentially opening a business, have a business plan, or just, you know, kind of have the idea and want to learn more, a free event. So that's February 13th, began at 6 o'clock out at the Algonah Iowa Lakes Campus. And then on kind of the personnel side of things, longtime street superintendent Kurt Nielsen is going to be retiring here coming up on February 15th will be his last day, and we will be hosting a retirement reception for him on the 14th that afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 here at City Hall. And then we recently completed the application and interview process for naming the city's next street superintendent, and the city has, or we've hired Dave Miller to be the next street superintendent. Dave currently serves as the assistant superintendent. He's been with the city street department for a little over 12 years now, and then we are currently accepting internal applicants to fill the now vacant assistant street superintendent role. So Dave will assume that position here on the 16th following Kurt's retirement. And then the city also did recently have a new police officer join us, so Drew Strom joined us here on January 24th, and I know he'll be at a council meeting here in the near future just to kind of get introduced and get on camera. But he comes from us, and most recently he worked in Iowa Falls, but he is already a certified officer, so it was a pretty, pretty quick learning curve to get him oriented with our processes, but it's nice to fill that. One of those two vacancies we had on the patrol officer side of things. And then finally, on the Central Park redevelopment splash pad project, we've got two recent funding pledges that I wanted to share with the group. The first was the Pharmacist Mutual Insurance Company, their employee foundation, has pledged $25,000 towards the project. And then as well as the Haggard Too Good Trust, they recently announced a pledge of $100,000 for that project, so both those very significant, and that fundraising has been going quite well, and we've been pleased with the community support, and as we discussed in the work session, we'll be moving forward with putting together final plans to go to bed here later this month and planning on starting this project here this summer. That's all I have.
Thank you Jacob. Agenda item number seven is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Anyone there would like to speak? See, and no one. We'll move to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from our January 16th council work session and our regular session, approve the minutes from the budget work session that we had, approve the bills to be paid this cycle, approve the department reports, as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approve Jacob's administrator's report.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Tyler, a second from Jody. Any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We'll move to agenda item number nine, and this is the third reading of an ordinance pertaining to the municipal cemeteries.
This makes an amendment to chapter 2.84 of the city code, which regulates the city cemeteries. The ordinance amendment has two kind of main sections of changes. So one is on the eligibility. The change is the eligibility requirements to expand the criteria to include an employee of a funeral home located in Algonah, or a person living within five miles of Algonah. The current ordinance states that it must be a resident of the city proper. And then the second set of changes in the ordinance is regarding the duties of the cemetery superintendent, so clarifies that's only the cemetery superintendent or their designee that is authorized to perform grave openings and closing, and then makes a few just kind of semantics and grammar changes to reference of the duties in the superintendent role.
Motion to waive the third reading.
I'll second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Jody to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion then to approve the third reading.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 10 concerns the hotel motel tax reports.
So the city has a 7% hotel motel sales tax in place, and there's a funding distribution of how those funds are allocated, and so annually, organizations within the city that receive hotel motel dollars report to the city on how they use those funds. So here tonight, we have representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Camp Algonah POW Museum. There was copies of the reports in the agenda packet, but whoever wants to get to the mic first, I would welcome them to come up and provide an overview of use of those dollars this last year.
Okay, well, once again, we appreciate the fact that we have the ability to have these dollars to help promote Algonah, our area and our businesses. One of the things that has changed a little bit from last year is the state tourism office and the way they work with the three regions, the Western Iowa, Central Iowa, and Eastern Iowa tourism. I'm meeting on the 17th, Amy and I are meeting with a representative from the state tourism to talk about how, what kind of opportunities they have within their travel guides and within the publications and resources that they put out through their office, so that we can better utilize the opportunities, because they obviously can go out a lot farther than what we can. So that will be some changes. The Western Iowa Tourism region is still in existence, it's just, there was just a separation from the actual Iowa tourism divisions. So we are still working with Western Iowa Tourism, and will continue to do so. There will just be some new opportunities available to us through the state. And I alluded to in my report, the fact that we've got some marketing brochures that are in need of updates, so it's a great time to look at doing that. One of the things is a community map, and I think Jacob, you helped us last time with those streets and stuff, because that, that kind of is always a work in progress. Anytime you do something printed, the minute you get it printed and start distributing it, then something happens and you're out of date. So we have the map, the Algonah map, a shopping in Algonah brochure, which I think needs to be maybe changed to shopping and dining. And then this was one we did a few years ago that says, "Explore Algonah's Hidden Treasures." And it talks about the A Wondersports Museum, the Historical Museum, Simpson Prairie Arts Council, the POW, the Nativity Scene, and Water's Edge, and the Cassup County Speedway. It also refers to events that are sponsored through Haggard Too Good Trust, the Corvett Forest, and the Cassup County Concert Association. So I'm going to be working on those and pulling information from the groups that are represented in there, just so that we have updated information as much as we can. We just got a call today from our Iowa Magazine that we've had great success with advertising. We share the cost between the POW Museum, the Nativity Scene, and Water's Edge, and I know Jerry will probably speak to the responses that they get from that advertisement. And one of the other things that we partner through the chamber with the POW Museum is the Travel Iowa Marketplace, which the chamber has funded that, but the representatives from the POW Museum attended, and there are a lot of bank tour operators and different types of group travel within communities that attend that. So they have been successful in bringing people, a lot of people to town, groups anywhere from 20 to 50 to 100, I mean, it just varies, and they're from all over the state. So with that, you know, I've listed all of the events that the chamber sponsors that brings in visitors, and how those dollars are utilized, but the biggest share of what we will have for expenses moving forward will be these printed materials. Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And Jerry, would you like to come up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, and council members. Appreciate the opportunity of coming and reporting to you again some interesting things that happened during this last year at the Camp Algonah POW Museum. First of all, I want to thank you for including us as a part of the hotel motel tax. It is vital that we are able to use that, and to use it in a way that helps grow the museum and keep it fresh, so that there's always something new for, for the people to see. As Vicki mentioned, another member of the museum committee, myself, were in Des Moines at last summer, last fall, to the tourism session and Iowa Tourism Department, and you can make some good contacts there, some friendly faces, or familiar faces, I should say, they were friendly, that we had seen before that want to come again. The interesting thing is, it's been three years since some of them were there because of COVID, so it's nice to make that connection again. One of the connections that I want to share with you is about a son of a German prisoner who was at Camp Algonah during World War II. Now Herbert Mastoff is the son of, I think, I don't recall what his father's name was, but his father was prisoner of war in the last year of the war, was brought to the United States, and this is a pretty typical way that they were processed, sent to the Midwest, because that's sort of where he came from in, when he was in Germany. They sent him to Camp Algonah to get processed, to get medical attention if he needed any, and then sent him to a ranch camp at Muscatine, Iowa, and it was there that he slept in a, not a sewage, but a, yeah, it was, it was a sewage disposal place in, no, I'll take that back. He slept in a fish hatchery, which is sort of like in the sewage area, because the smell is, is there. But they, they had an open room on their, a place where they have the fish hatchery. He was there, he talks about being able to hear all of the trains coming down, all the barges coming down the Mississippi, and it sort of reminded him of home, which is nice. He did also work in some of the fields in the, on Muscatine Island that were growing watermelons, and he also then worked also at the fish hatchery. He was eventually brought back to Camp Algonah, and then refitted or outfitted again for a group of them that were going out into Colorado, not to rake the forest, but to clear some of the old cut forests there, and it was a job that a number of prisoners did. It was a time that he could really enjoy traveling across the country and being a part of something that was very useful. Then as the war was getting over, he was brought back to Camp Algonah, again re-outfitted with some winter clothes this time, and began the process of going back to, to Europe. He went to Omaha, Nebraska, they, there they picked up another group of prisoners, went across the country by train, and eventually got to San Francisco, got on a ship, and it was on this ship that there were some prisoner, there were some guards that had been at Camp Algonah, or the fellow originally was from Fort Dodge, that was on this, this ship, went down through the Panama Canal, and then back to, to Europe. And so as his father was telling Herbert a little bit about his experiences, Herbert wanted to come to the United States and do what Dad had done. And it was, it was really an interesting experience to, to meet him. He is, he enjoys dual citizenships in Germany and the United States, as he is in business that affect both countries. We had a couple of car groups that came to the, to the museum this year, both of them on a tour of visiting different cities. One of them was 13 Model As, okay? All of them got here, all of them left, and we are sure that they, they got back in, in good shape. It was a cool day, and they were outfitting themselves with coats, because riding across even in the summertime with no air conditioner, you're going to need a little, little extra help. Also then a classy Corvette group came to the museum, and so this is just typical of the different groups that come, come through. We didn't have any bus groups until about midsummer, when people decided, you know, this COVID thing maybe is going to wane down a little bit, and we began to have, eventually having seven different bus groups that brought visitors from Minnesota as well as, as Iowa. Our attendance there for the year, we had a high watermark of 2,500 visitors, and it's interesting, as we know, every visitor that comes to our community has a ripple effect. They go to drive down Main Street and throw money out, but they, I would say you remember, Vicki, that they say visitors have, can't remember how many times their dollars multiplied.
Seven.
Seven times over, yeah, good. And so it's, there were some men that helped the rest of the community, many of them. Also either went to the Agonado Sports Museum, or the Cassup County Historic Society, or the Nativity Scene, as well as the museum. One of the things that our intern and the docents helped us with this summer, we had been in the building about 15 years, and the original signage was in need of replacement, and so that was, that was done by one of the firms, Sign Works Inc., Inc. in Algonah, and so that should last us for, for quite a while. We also then, the committee volunteers do the weekend hosting, and that gives them a chance to see the various people that, that come, and it just keeps their service to our committee much more valuable, even more valuable. We had two high school gals that worked alternate days, and then one senior in college that is going to graduate this putting with a degree in public history, which will lead him to some type of museum position, he hopes, in the, in the next several, several years. And one of the things that he also did was to do some inventory of our, of our collection, and we're working very hard to make sure that our collection is safe. We are always making, trying to, to make a plan in case of a disaster. You don't want that disaster to come, and so we have, now we had been involved with having our collection backed up by a company that originally started in Algonah and now is in Des Moines, but we eventually are doing this ourselves with a, with a large self-backup that is stored in the bank. I can't leave without telling you a little bit about Silent Night in Algonah, because one of the members of the crew, one of the members of the cast is Mr. Mayor, and his wife were featured in that, in that film, and they're, as well as a number of other citizens. Our committee had nothing specific to do with that, it was financed by a private organization, but they did come to us the year before the film was, was produced, and stopped at the museum, wanted to make sure that what they had in the film for a scenario was a plausible thing. You know, you don't want to, to display something in a film that absolutely couldn't happen. And so it was a fictional account, but it was based upon some real events. I think it's been a very successful investment, a successful enterprise. What we know, what we think we know is that, what Don just told us, is that they will eventually show this in a number of other cities, which is happening now, but then make a DVD and sell the DVD that any of you might want to buy, if you are so inclined. And so it's been something that has, again, created a way of remembering the fact that the prisoners were here doing the, the job that many of the American young people had been doing before they were called into service, and the fact that $3.5 million of, of income was generated by these prisoners, not just in Algonah, but in the 34 ranch camps in our section of the country. And so again, thank you so much for supporting us, and we hope this continues. Glad to take any questions.
Jerry, are you still rotating the artifacts?
Yes.
Because I think my dad's Army jacket is there.
Right.
So I'm assuming that once in a while it's on display, and then it's put away.
Yeah, we rotated out and are able to, and we have, we have enough Army and Navy uniforms to rotate a small platoon.
Very good.
But that's, that's fine, and we're glad to, to display this. Other questions?
Jerry, do any classrooms or schools come to visit and take a tour?
Yes, they do, and one of the things that we developed as a policy right away was, any student who goes to school in Cassup County is free to, there's no charge, and that has helped a great deal, as some of them, they come in on Saturday, but most, most, beginning in about 5th grade, the classrooms come in and take a tour along with the Nativity Scene, and Brian Conick at Algonah High School has a class in World War II that has used, he uses that as his classroom, so that's a great for. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you Jerry.
Thank you.
So I think we need a motion then to receive and accept these reports.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports from the chamber and the POW.
Second.
Motion, Jody, second from Tyler, any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thanks again for presenting tonight. Agenda item number 11 is to consider a request for a street closure for St. Patrick's Day parade.
I believe we have Jane Skogstrom here to make that request.
Hi, I have given you a map that Rachel sent me, to start on Harlan Street and go to the end of Torrington Street for the parade. It's still a work in progress. I have, I have the truck, that's about all I have, and I have the grand marshal. I have never done this, I live in Minneapolis, I haven't done this parade, I used to attend it, but I wanted my adversary to be in the wire, the grand marshal. So I tried to find out who was responsible, and no one took ownership. I got this blessing that he would actually be in the parade, so then I went for it, and I got to Vicki and I got to Dan. So that's what I want to do, is I just want to have a parade to get, and we'll get out as many Irish people that are in the town, maybe who come from far and wide, well, our family is coming from far and wide, so, I don't know. If you have any questions I may, may not be able to answer them.
Is this the same route it's been when they've done in the past?
Actually, well, it's something, you're going Arlen to Torrington, is that where you said?
Yeah.
Okay, that's shorter than it used to be. I mean, they used, when, when, they used to start at American Green.
Okay.
Okay, but I didn't want to have to shut down 169.
Well, yeah, and that's fine, that actually is, I like that. Maybe on that, that's, that's a lot easier there.
Yes.
Are you, I mean, is this something you're asking, the street can be shut down, or the, the street just like they do, we, we never shut down anything. We literally put a car, stopped the traffic for the two minutes as you guys walked until you got downtown, and then that's what you did before, and that's not wrong.
I think in years past, that's, yeah, they've gathered, and, and there's been the parade, the car, I mean, the street's not actually closed as such, there's the parade.
I remember when my aunt Minchie was the grand marshal, I think this road was closed, I don't think there were.
Yeah, I don't think for, yeah, I don't think for St. Patrick's Day, but certainly.
So no, I'm cool with that.
Okay.
I'm trying to get a van, a marching van, but not having tons of success yet, so, you know, they say it could last two minutes, it could last 15, but that's probably about it.
Yeah, good. Well, we'll look forward to having the parade.
Cool. Cool. So, approve it, and I can go forward.
Is one thing of note, if there were to be a band or, you know, or something, you know, just let us know and coordinate that, because if there has to be an area that they're staged and set up, you know, like a lot of times, like when there's homecoming, we might block down off one of the side streets just because everyone needs to assemble. So, if there is anything like that, kind of logistic-wise, that's more than just kind of people filling in, you know, we'd wanna make sure.
So, I'll run a desk you need to.
Well, we got.
I mean, because we have a week notice, I mean, that gives us, I mean, that gives us.
I can do that.
Yeah. I mean, if you start thinking of a bunch of people, please reach out. I'm really concerned, like, okay, we appreciate you, but.
If you could, you know, have that to us by, you know, Monday, March 6th, that would be, we have a council meeting that day, so if there would have to be any changes or things, you know, we could discuss it then.
Okay, I can do that. Probably around four. I have been told that's what it was in the past.
Right. I think that's correct.
Sounds correct.
I was just gonna make sure the kids were out of school.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
So, it's a go.
I'd make a motion then we approve this street, whatever, do we call it closure? However, do we call it just, but the parade route for St. Patty's?
Sounds.
Yeah, the parade route, absolutely closed, but the parade route, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody, to approve the parade route that was presented to us. Any other discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Okay, agenda item number twelve pertains to revolving, retail revolving loan fund agreement.
On January 17th, the retail, well, we loan fund committee met to discuss an application from Ben and Carrie Gatten, who are owners of Top Dog Brewing Policy, who wanting to start a small brewing business in the upper level of the Axe House. The RLF committee approved the loan pending council meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the RLF to Top Dog Brewing Company.
I'll second.
A motion from Brad, second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And we wish, certainly wish them well.
Looking forward.
Yeah. But agenda item number thirteen pertains to a satisfaction of a mortgage.
Kara Undole had a loan with the city through the housing rehabilitation owner-activated program. That loan has been paid in full. This resolution acknowledges that and then authorizes the release of mortgage, which was used to secure the loan.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Tyler. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Okay.
So, on the release of the mortgage, it doesn't state the address. Is that, well, am I just missed that in the past? Do we typically need the mortgage, I mean, the address of the property, or just?
You don't need the address of the property. You just need the document number of the...
Of the loan?
Yeah, reference number 2000, what is that, 15-1668? That is all that's needed.
Okay.
Because this, the release does get recorded at the courthouse.
Okay.
And the initial mortgage was recorded, and the, when it was recorded, the mortgage was document number 2015-1668.
Okay.
So, that's what we're releasing, is that mortgage that was, that document, you know, on June 15th of 2015. So, it's a good question, but no, we do not need to have an address in there.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Good question.
Thank you.
So, let's see, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hear it now. Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, this refers to the Teets Park Shelter House project.
This resolution accepts the 2021 Teets Park Shelter House project, the final payout, which would be pay application number nine, which would release all the retainage, it would be in the amount of $41,803.2. The shelter house, the city has been using it. It's been available to rent since January. There's just kind of a few housekeeping items. We're waiting on the general contractor to finish up. There is, one of the things that they just recently changed here was the wall pack lightings among the building, just the light fixture, how those were set up in the angle. Once the weather gets warm up here, they have to do a little kind of just cosmetic trim work around there, around them to spruce them up a bit. But we're just planning to consider that as a warranty item, which, you know, the project has a one-year warranty, so that would just be included with that. So, this resolution, just because we have been occupying it now, accepts the project and approves final payment to Sam Construction, who is the general contractor.
I have a question on those exterior lights. Are those just on all the time, dusk till dawn?
They're supposed to be on a photo cell. Yeah, that's just dusk till dawn.
Okay, they're bright. They're very bright. Like, notice them from Oak Street, bright through the trees. Lucas, I don't know if there was a way to, I don't wanna dim them down, but, I mean, if they're on all night, I wouldn't wanna live on State Street there and Bank Street where, not so much State, all of State, but like Bank Street and then the people on Finn Drive.
That's up to them.
Yeah. Well, and one of the things that, with the lights that they switched out there now, adjustable, so it might be a matter of throwing the angle down.
Yeah, you could just knock them down just a little bit. I like that they're bright, but it seems like we're just lighting up the sky.
Yeah, well, we'll look into what we can do to change those.
Okay.
But we're happy with everything else, because we've had a lot going on with this project.
Yeah, there is a lot of back and forth on just getting things to where we found they're acceptable. There is a lot of interior block work, you know, that they just gotta get, you know, matched up in terms of the colors and consistency. That just took some time.
Yeah.
And then this last summer, the big delay was having to refinish the block, because the first time they tried staining it, that didn't work. So, they had, at that point, they had found a new subcontractor to come in and do that. So, that's kind of the big exterior work, kind of separate from the project, but things that we'll be working on this spring and summer, just with the Parks Department crew and some local contractors is kind of just some of the drainage around the site and probably piping that to the retention pond or the dry kind of retainage area that we have there, just to help with kind of some localized areas where we get some saturation that was outside of the project's scope. And then, one of the items is just kind of the trade-offs, as we looked at different things that, you know, in terms of, okay, this is acceptable, and what we're gonna have them try to keep fixing, or say, no, we're, you know, that's fine as it is, is they, we did have them do additional landscaping work around Salt Lake Rock and that edger as well. So, yeah, it certainly took enough time, but we've gotten everything. Yeah, we're satisfied with the outcomes of where we get the project.
Make a motion to approve the final payout.
I'll second.
A motion from Brad, second from Jody. Any discussion?
I will just mention that the city is going to be hosting a chamber ribbon cutting event at the shelter house on Friday, March 24th at 9:30 a.m., open to the public. So, if anyone wants to see a peek inside, or like I said, either by calling City Hall or online, it is, the interior now is available to rent.
Any other discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 15, no, I'm sorry, that one, we're removing. Agenda item number 16 is to approve a pay application for the South Park Pickleball Court project.
This is a pay application number four from Earpolding's Excavating Enterprises. The pay application is the amount of $12,031.94. The pay application is for some of the outstanding work they had on the handrail and kind of the final installation. And then, because we had some outstanding items, as you recall, in pay application number three, we had withheld twice the standard retainage. So, this pay application takes care of the handrail, that extra retainage, and still withholds retainage of $10,303.94 on the pay, on the project that we anticipate will approve payment of this spring. We accept the project, and the drinking fountain can get the final installation. That's, I believe, the only outstanding item at this point.
I'll move your approval payout.
I'll second.
A motion from Tyler, second from Jody. Any discussion? Roll call Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 17 pertains to two tax exemption requests.
We have received revitalization tax exemption requests. One is for improvements to residential property at 801 West Nebraska Street. The other is of commercial exemption for improvements to existing structure at 2400 East Oak Street. Both properties appear to be within urban revitalization areas, and so recommend approval of the applications.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And agenda item number 18, this is to set a public hearing for the fiscal year 2324 budget.
So, this is a hearing setting the maximum property tax dollars for certain property tax levies in the city. This is not the adopted levies or the budget, but it's basically saying this is the maximum that could potentially be charged for our property tax revenue. So, this item is just to approve the notice and set the public hearing for the next city council meeting on February 20th at 5:00 p.m.
Motion to set the public hearing.
I'll second.
A motion from Rodney, second from Jody, to set the public hearing at our next city council meeting on Monday, February 20th at 5:00 p.m. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 19 is appointment to the Cemetery Board of Trustees. This one will need to, again, move to the next meeting, as we just now approved a change in the cemetery code. So, we know if Kenny's still willing to serve. I have, I'm not asked her yet, but we can, yeah. That would just then fill out her term if she would be willing to do that. Agenda item number 20, this is an appointment to the Broadband Telecommunication Commission. Jay Givens' term expired the end of 2022, and I'm happy that Bob Harrington, who's an employee at AMU, has agreed to be appointed to a five-year term. So, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Bob Harrington to that commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Harrington to the Broadband Telecommunication Commission.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you, Bob. We welcome you. And agenda item number 21, our final agenda item, is an appointment, a non-voting city council representative to the Broadband Telecommunication Commission. According to City Code Section 2.9, 2.30, that establishes an eighth member to the Broadband Telecommunications Commission, which is a non-voting member, and a member of the Algonah City Council, and appointed by the city council as a whole. So, Tyler Gibney has been asked and has agreed to represent the council on that commission. So, I would entertain a motion to, as such.
That's really wordy. That's very wordy.
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
No.
My motion, we, yeah, Tyler, you're on the Broadband Communications Commission.
My second.
Motion is second.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tyler.
Any discussion?
Can I, can I vote on this?
You can't. You can't, but you're still gonna lose 3-1.
We only have four votes. We just need a majority of the.
Since the motion.
We just decide, like, to vote no for the first time.
No.
Yes, you should.
This does vote every other month. I mean, this does meet every other month, just so you know.
Three hours.
No, just kidding. Okay, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Motion carried. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. It is 5:48, and I would entertain a motion then to adjourn the city council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Bye-bye.